Okay, alright.
Sounds like it's working.
Alright, um, so, um, after a brief, uh, I'll call the meeting back to order after a brief technical issue and, um, and we are back. So we are back in public hearing number two on the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School District FY twenty-five budget. Um, and we will start, uh, Vinny, uh, is gonna give us a presentation on the budget.
Well, thank you everyone for joining us tonight. We're here for our second public hearing on the FY twenty-five final budget recommendation for the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School District. Now, in the, for the agenda tonight, in the exhibit, there is a link for a fifty-two slide presentation. I do not plan on going through the whole fifty-two slides, more just kind of a mid-level review of kind of the major uh, budget changes year over year, but for any of the, uh, members in the audience or anyone on TV, you can go to the, uh, school committee agenda and find the full exhibit that details out, uh, every change year over year, uh, based on our school location and broken down by DESI category. So when we originally look to build our budget, uh, there are a list of main things that we look at. Uh, when you break down our budget, it represents, uh, it includes twenty-five point three million dollars in salaries. Uh, in addition, there is six point seven million in benefits and fixed charges that are included. Uh, that's a total of thirty-two million and represents seventy-two percent of our entire budget. Uh, so major shifts year over year are obviously linked mostly to our staff and to our salaries. Therefore, we mainly look at our collective bargaining agreements, uh, where it states all of our COLA adjustments, our step increases, and our column and lane changes. Uh, ultimately, the, that really is the main, uh, change year over year and what contributes to that increase from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five. Uh, in addition to that, we do look at if anyone has declared any retirements or any staff turnover. And these two areas, uh, we sometimes see savings year over year, cause we, uh, either a higher, more, um, uh, a teacher that falls higher on the salary scale is usually replaced with someone who's less seasoned and falls lower on the salary scale, and therefore we realize savings year over year. Uh, in addition, which has been a hot topic issue, is our health insurance enrollment changes and, and any premium rate increases that I'll get into in a little bit more detail, uh, later on in the presentation. But one of the first things we look at when we go to build our buzzet, budget is our enrollment shift. Uh, this is how many students reside in Hamilton and how many reside in, uh, Wenham. We take the total and break down by percentage. This gives us our total distribution of expenses, uh, during the budget process. So how many percentages of students live in Hamilton, uh, breaks down to how much percentage of the budget that the Hamilton taxpayers have to pay versus the Wenham taxpayers. In summary, year over year, that we've seen an increase of seventeen students, five of them in Hamilton, and twelve of them in Wenham. Um, so what does that do, what does that do to our budget year over year is what we call our enrollment shift. Uh, and for FY twenty-five compared to prior years, we had a low enrollment shift this year. Only roughly twenty-four thousand dollars, uh, shifted away from Wenham and went towards Hamilton. Uh, we like seeing this year over year, cause that keeps the budget kind of consistent and reduces those hills and valleys, uh, throughout the budget cycle. Uh, so a low number like this is really, uh, what we, what we look for year over year. The next thing we review is our revenues. Uh, year over year, from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five, uh, the school district saw a lot of growth in our revenue. This was also experienced in FY twenty-three. So we're carrying that forward to FY twenty-five. Uh, year over year, we are realizing an additional three hundred and seventy-five dollars in additional offsets and revenues. This represents a growth of just under six percent. Uh, but one number that is also included in our revenue sources is our E and D account. For FY twenty-five, we are realizing a reduction of eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars as it relates to E and D. So if you add this amount to our other revenue sources, it does paint a little bit of a different picture. As you see here, it's kind of the opposite effect, a reduction of five percent. Uh, however, for those of you who have seen the presentations, we really try to match our excess and deficiency with one-time expense offsets, cause E and D is a one-time revenue source. So even though our revenue has dropped eight hundred and seventy thousand, uh, the exact same amount was reduced out of our expenses. So the net result on the town isn't, uh, there's no change as, as a result of our reduction in E and D. It's just an overall reduction to our spending throughout the fiscal year. So really, when you look at our revenue, we've seen, uh, a lot of growth from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five. The next thing we go to look at is our expenses. So we start basically from scratch and add in all our personnel and build out our health insurance, premium rate increases, and meet with each budget holder and go through their non-salary accounts, uh, and enter in all the information. Presented here is our overall operating budget. Uh, year over year, we are seeing an increase of just over one percent, and it represents, uh, just under five hundred thousand dollar increase from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five. Our final gross operating budget that we're requesting for FY twenty-five is forty-four million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. This is our operating side. We, in addition, we do have debt service. Uh, debt service is big capital projects that we do throughout the year or in past years, and we take a loan or borrow money. Uh, and we slowly pay that down every year. We currently have six projects, uh, that we took out debt for. Uh, the Cutler Roof, the Bueker Boiler and Winthrop Boilers, the Winthrop Sprinkler System, um, uh, various projects during FY twenty-one. And for FY twenty-five, we have two new projects, the Cutler Feasibility Study and the Athletic, uh, Complex. Just gonna skip forward to grab the number. Uh, so year over year, for our debt service, we are requesting an increase of one point four million dollars. Uh, you can tie this back directly to the first paydown of the Athletic Complex, uh, Complex upgrades. Uh, in addition to that one point four million, our net operating assessments to the towns, we are requesting an increase of nine hundred and ninety-two thousand. Uh, this represents for our operating budget, a two point nine percent increase year over year. But when you add this to our debt service, uh, it does paint a little bit of a different picture and our total year over year assessment is coming in at six point eight-five percent. However, just to remind everyone, that is because of the debt service, uh, which most of that was, uh, voted as a debt exclusion outside of Prop two and a half and outside of the levy limit. Uh, so here forward, I'm gonna go through our operating expenses and just highlight some of the major changes year over year, uh, just from a high level, high level view. Uh, with our enrollment shift, we are seeing a slight increase in enrollment at the elementary level and a slight decrease at the secondary level. So what we tried to do during the budget process was match that with our salaries. So we did shift some people around and add some staff at the elementary level, but we reduced that at the secondary level and across the district in our district-wide programs, uh, like central office, technology, uh, and student services. All in all, for the elementary level, we are seeing an increase of one point six FTEs. At the secondary level, we are seeing a reduction of just under two and a half. And in our district-wide programs, we are recognizing a reduction of just over five and a half. The net result is a reduction of six and a half FTEs, which reflects a two point, uh, two point one percent decrease in our overall staffing levels. So I'm just gonna go school by school and highlight a few major categories from, from each school. Uh, for the Bueker Elementary School, we are seeing an increase year over year of a hundred and ninety thousand. Uh, this reflects an increase for Bueker of two point two five FTEs. Uh, the major cost drivers relate to those salaries and the increases related to the staff that are already present. Uh, right now, we do, we are requesting, uh, right now, we did reallocate a one point oh FTE ESL teacher from the central office DAC to the Bueker Elementary School. Even though this isn't an increase overall across the district, when looking at Bueker alone and is an increase to Bueker of approximately fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, in addition, we did reorganize our elementary specialist positions. Uh, for the Bueker Elementary School, we did allocate zero point two additional FTEs. Uh, but again, you'll see a reduction in either Cutler or, uh, Winthrop. The net result across all three is, is a zero FTE increase. But when looking at Bueker alone, it is, uh, an increase of point two FTEs with, which represent, it represented a fifteen thousand dollar increase in this category. Uh, continuing with Bueker, and you will see at, also at Cutler and Winthrop, is we've requested two, a total of two FTE library teachers to be dispersed across the three elementary schools, which represents a point six-six FTE for each building. Uh, so you'll see that, uh, two more times throughout the presentation. At the Bueker Elementary School, it, it, it translates into a forty-four thousand dollar increase under our other teaching services DESI category. Uh, in addition, we also reviewed all of our ESPs. Uh, that's a new acronym this year. They're formerly known as our Teaching Assistance. Uh, with our ESP reorganization, we moved a lot of, uh, people around the elementary schools. For the Bueker Elementary School, it ended up, uh, increasing their overall FTE by one point oh and cost approximately thirty-three thousand dollars. Uh, some offsets though relates to our FY twenty-four E and D. For FY twenty-four budget, we did allocate approximately a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in one-time expenses to make some upgrades to the gymnasium behind us. Uh, we completed those upgrades, and since it's a one-time E and D offset, that is being removed out of the Bueker Elementary School, which is causing some of the reductions here. Uh, moving on to Cutler, you'll notice it's a smaller year-over-year increase compared to the other two elementary schools coming in at just over twenty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, the main reason for this is we saw a lot of programs leave Cutler and go to the other two elementary schools. Uh, especially in terms of our student services programs. We shifted whole programs which incorporated two teachers and three TAs to the Winthrop School. So when I get there, you'll see there's a substantial increase to Winthrop, and that's because, uh, again, they, a lot of the movement from Cutler went over there. Um, but for the Cutler Elementary School, and again, what we're seeing across the district is our increase in enrollment at the elementary level, and for the past four budget cycles, it's actually caused an additional, uh, classroom teacher needed for every single grade, one time a year. So for the past four budget cycles, we've had to add a one point oh grade school teacher every single year, and that works its way up. FY twenty-five will represent the final year, hopefully that we have to do this, as now there will be seven classrooms for every single grade across the district. Uh, so hopefully that flatlines over the next budget, couple budget cycles, and we no longer have to add that additional, uh, one point oh grade school teacher. Uh, in addition, as I just, uh, mentioned, we did, uh, trade in, uh, a one point oh FTE teacher uh, in order to come up with additional ESPs to help provide coverage in our student services department. Uh, those positions were eliminated, uh, were traded in and moved to the Winthrop Elementary School. This resulted in a ninety-one thousand dollar reduction to the, uh, Cutler Elementary School. Uh, continuing with, with Cutler, as I mentioned, we also have our point six-six library teacher, uh, that will be at all three elementary schools. For Cutler, that increased their overall budget by thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, again, you can see here a reduction of additional ESPs, uh, in the tune of eighty-six thousand dollars, which represented a reduction of three, three point oh, um, ESP Teaching Assistance. Moving on to Winthrop, you can see that it is a bigger year-over-year increase, and again, that's because a lot of the Cutler expenses were moved over to Winthrop. Uh, that's why reflected here is a three hundred and forty-three thousand dollar increase year over year. Uh, in addition, the Winthrop Element, Elementary School in total is going up two point six-five FTEs. One of them is which, one of which is a new TLC Special Education teacher, um, which were estimated to cost just under ninety-one thousand dollars. Uh, in addition, a big item for Winthrop School is the COLA on their base, uh, which is coming in at just under seventy-one thousand dollars. Uh, again, just pointing out the point six-six FTE library teacher for forty-eight thousand dollars. That kind of wraps up the library teachers across the three elementary schools. Again, in total, it adds up to two point oh FTEs. Uh, in addition, uh, currently for FY, our FY twenty-four budget, we have, uh, basically one point five uh, pre-K ESPs in each classroom. Uh, we're requesting to add one more additional pre-K ESP. Pre-K does run a shorter day, that's why here it's only reflected as a point eight instead of a one point oh. Uh, that's just because the, the hours are a little, are a little less, uh, for the pre-K program. Uh, in addition, we had a request from Student Services to increase our physical therapist, uh, teacher at the Winthrop Elementary School. Right now, they are a point eight FTE, and we had a request to increase it by point two, making it a full one point oh position. Uh, this is costing us approximately tw- twenty thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, moving on to the Miles River Middle School, we, again, you can see a little higher year-over-year average uh, coming in at just over six point three percent. A lot of this has to do with the reallocation of our curriculum leaders. Uh, historically, our curriculum leaders were always documented in our budget as a one point oh teacher. Uh, in fact, they really are a point six teacher and a point four curriculum leader. Uh, that point four really should fall to our instructional leadership DESI category. So for the FY twenty-five budget, I'm making the correction, and we've moved out point four of all seven curriculum leaders from the high school teachers DESI category and put them in, uh, the instructional leadership DESI category. But we split it, high school, middle school, because they oversee six through twelve. Uh, it was un, it was unfair to the high school to have one hundred percent of those salaries charged off to the high school. So we split them fifty-fifty between the high school and middle school. Uh, in addition, we have a hundred and six thousand dollars for the COLA increase on the teacher's contract, uh, as well as the reallocation of our ESL teacher that was previously, uh, documented in the central office DAC. When we get to the central office DAC, you'll see the reduction there. Uh, they are also split fifty-fifty, so you'll see it again when we get to the high school, um, slides. Uh, in addition, to, um, kind of help with the increase enrollment at the elementary school and to help, uh, pay for the need for additional staff at the elementary level, we are planning on a one point oh FTE reduction at the middle school to kind of help reallocate some of those FTEs to help with the increased enrollment at the elementary level. Uh, just another topic at the Miles River Middle School I wanted to point out. This year is the first time that we are allocating a pool of money to help with the DC field trip. Uh, this year, we did run into, um, a few hardships where some families couldn't financially afford the trip to DC. So we had a request, uh, from the principal to set aside some funds to help support, uh, those families in need that want to take, uh, the amazing trip to our nation's capital. So we've set aside some funds. We don't exactly know, uh, what those funds will turn out to next year or how, how much is needed. Uh, right now, it's kind of just our, our estimated guess on how many people actually, um, applied for it this year or, or asked about it this year, I should say. Uh, moving on to the high school, we are actually seeing a reduction of twenty-two thousand dollars, and this is, again, mainly attributed to that curriculum leader reclassification. Over two hundred thousand dollars was removed from the high school. Over $200,000 was removed from the high school and put over to the middle school, again, for that additional point, for half of the .4 curriculum leader base pay, as well as the stipends and FTE supervision stipends that they receive. That was that one. In addition, we are seeing a good COLA increase of approximately $122,000 for the teachers' DESI category alone, just pointing out the other half of the ESL teacher that was reallocated from the Central Office DAC. Just like we saw at the middle school, at the high school, we are anticipating a reduction of a 1.6 FTE classroom teacher, again, to help shift that staff to the elementary school where it's needed because of the increased enrollment at the elementary and the decrease enrollment at the secondary level. In addition, during FY24, we reallocated some positions and caused a, and the result of it was a reduction of a 1.0 ESP at the high school, which translates into a $31,000 reduction for our other Teaching Services DESI category. On top of that, this year, we also reduced a .5 FTE Guidance Counselor position at the high school. This resulted in savings of $50,000 reflected in our FY25 budget moving forward. For our Athletics Department, we are seeing a $71,000 increase year-over-year, or roughly just under 12%. The main cause of this is the need for additional trainers. What happens here, there is multiple practices and multiple games occurring at once, and we only have one trainer to oversee multiple locations. So in terms of safety, there was a request from our Athletic Director to add an additional trainer next year to help oversee different locations at different times. In addition, we did move out $18,000 of field maintenance that was historically charged under our user fees and included in the cost that we charge each student to participate in the sports. We have moved that out and are charging it directly to our operating budget and are not using fees to offset that. In addition, under the last kind of green item here, we did have a request, again, for safety reasons, that's the sports that do not have an assistant coach, that we fund an additional assistant coach for that sport, and again, it's because of safety. If something happened out on the playing field with a student, and the only coach that was out there had to assist the student or go with the student to wherever they have to go to receive services, there'd be nobody there left to look over the kids that are still there. So there is a request to add additional coaches for those teams that currently do not have one. That additional request for coaches, combined with the reduction of the field maintenance, or the reallocation of field maintenance, is really what's caused the reduction in our overall user fee match, even though we are incorporating new assistant coaches for those sports teams that do not have one. For the Central Office DAC, we are seeing just over a 1.5% increase year-over-year. Some main drivers here is a $44,000 increase, $44,000 reallocation of software that was, that was historically included in our instructional materials DESI category within the Technology DAC that was incorrectly coded as instructional software, and it really is administrative software. This includes things like Aspen and Budget Sense, our accounting software. In addition, we are seeing a $37,000 increase in our long-term sub and short-term subs. For FY23 and currently year-to-date for FY24, we've seen a real uptick in absences and an uptick in the usage of our FMLA policy. Therefore, the need for increased substitutes has resulted in increased need for substitutes, and we're carrying that forward into FY25. For our transportation, for FY25, it is our last year of our three-year contract, and in it, it includes a $51,000 increase for the general contract price to transport our students to and from school. In addition, we've established a second scholarship fund. This is outside of athletics, to help pay for kind of any student-based activities. This includes field trips or clubs that some families have shown hardship and not able to afford. We thought it was a good idea to help set aside a pool of money so we can ensure that all students have an equal and even chance to engage in any of our activities, whether it's during school or after school. Some offset here is a $50,000 reduction to our CAF bailout. So historically, the cafeteria has run a deficit, but ever since Universal Free Lunch came around about two years ago, our cafeteria department has either broke even or generated a little bit of a profit, with the state finally putting in Universal Free Lunch indefinitely. We feel confident that the cafeteria will continue to either generate a profit and break even, so we've reduced the line item for the reserve in case they run a deficit. In terms of our maintenance DAC, we are seeing an increase of $28,000, or roughly 4.8%. The main driver here, again, is a reallocation of expenses. Historically, all of our internet charges across the district was charged off to the Technology DAC, and this is really a utility, just like your phone bill, just like your water bill, and should really fall into the maintenance category. That was just under $15,000 and really does represent most of the increase within this DAC. In terms of our benefits and fixed charges, we are seeing a substantial increase year-over-year of $1.1 million, but just to point out, $500,000 of that is for one-time E&amp;D offset to our OPEB account. This is our other post-employment benefits. As part of the overall, I believe it was just under $3 million in E&amp;D offsets, $500,000 is being dedicated to OPEB. This is a very good amount. This combined with our FY23 amount has really placed us much higher in our overall OPEB liability and really reduced our net liability year-over-year. I believe in total, after this payment is complete, will be, our balance will be just over $3 million, which really is a great thing, and just over a three-year span, we've really, we've really done good work in our OPEB trust fund. In addition, we are recognizing a substantial increase in our health insurance premiums. Health insurance really is outpacing our entire budget. This isn't just a Hamilton Wenham issue, it really is a statewide issue and a countrywide issue. Health insurance costs are rising dramatically, not just because of inflation, but because of usage across the country, and we really are anticipating a pretty good increase in our premium rates for FY25, which is why we're reflecting such a substantial increase in our health insurance lines. In addition, we did get hit pretty hard for our Essex Retirement Liability payment this year. What happened here is Hamilton Wenham, along with a lot of communities on the North Shore, all has to contribute to the Essex County Retirement Liability. It all depends on how much your payroll is from year to year. Hamilton Wenham for FY24 accounted for approximately 2.1% of their overall liability. With our new ESP contract, our overall salaries increased a little bit. This in turn made our overall portion of the liability 2.3%, so that's an increase of 0.2, and on the surface, that might not sound like a lot, but the annual liability is $50 million, so .2% of $50 million is just south of $70,000. This is added in to our normal year-over-year increase on the liability. So if our portion of the overall liability did not change, our year-over-year increase would be around $60,000. With this increase, it adds another $70,000, which is where we're coming up with our 133. That is about a 12% increase on that line item alone, and really did, really did hurt us this year, this year, with the Essex Retirement contribution. In terms of our capital acquisitions and improvements, we are seeing a reduction year-over-year of 1.2 million, but everything you see on this slide directly relates to E&amp;D offsets. So for FY24, we had three offsets that we placed in, a $1.7 million Capital Stabilization Fund transfer, $275,000 for smart boards, and $300,000 for theater lighting. Again, because that's an E&amp;D offset, it's a one-time expense that gets removed after the budget cycle's over, and then we review if there are any new FY25 E&amp;D offsets. Just like I had mentioned with OPEB, we are also contributing that same amount to the Capital Stabilization Fund of just under 500,000. In addition, we are recommending the final phase of our four-year Smart Board Replacement Project at the end of FY25. This will mean that every single Smart Board in every single classroom across the district has been replaced, something that I believe the teachers are very happy about. In addition, we are requesting $225,000 to replace aging equipment to possibly make a few upgrades, again, to the Bueker Elementary School, and we're also looking into purchasing passenger van to help with athletic busing issues and help reduce the overall user fee costs that we're seeing there because of rising transportation rate increases. For our special, for our Special Education DAC, we are seeing a year-over-year decrease of $355,000. This, again, goes hand-in-hand with that reallocation of staff from the secondary and district-wide down to the elementary school because of that change in enrollment. So reflected here is a reduction of a .8 Student Services Administrative Assistant that's reflected a $43,000 savings, as well as a reduction of a .7 FTE Physical Therapist and a reduction of $45,000 for some of our home services and tutoring aids that, excuse me, that are extended through after-school programs and after-school tutoring that is also being reduced. In addition, we are reducing a 1.0 FTE Psychologist, which we're anticipating will save us just under $105,000. Student Services really worked hard this year to kind of rearrange our transportation. This is for out-of-district students. We tried to team up with community members around us who have students going to the same out-of-district school as we do, so we have a cost-share situation going on. Just as an example, we could have a student in, you know, Ipswich or Rowley that attends maybe Landmark, which is south of us, so the driver would start in Ipswich or Rowley, pick up their students, stop into Hamilton, pick up ours, and then go to Landmark. So we kind of split the cost with that other district, so they really tried to work hard to reduce our overall out-of-district transportation costs, and it really added up in savings of approximately $136,000. This also includes just changes in our out-of-district placement in general. So the less out-of-district students, there obviously would be less students to transport and lower transportation costs. The last item for the Student Services Department is a reduction of approximately $42,000 in tuitions, but I would like to point out that is not reflective of what is actually going on. Our tuitions actually increased about $100,000 year-over-year. However, for FY25, we're starting the phased-in reduction of our prepaid tuitions. So we don't love prepaid tuitions. We did them during COVID because it was a situation we felt like we had to do, so we're planning on phasing that out and slowly reducing that amount over the next few budget cycles. This will be the first part of that phase-in, and overall, we're planning on using $156,000 in prepaid, in prepaid tuitions to lower our FY25 tuitions, the net result being a reduction of $52,000. But again, they really went up 100,000. For our last DAC is our Technology, where we're seeing a overall reduction of just about $71,000. This really has to do with the reallocation of expenses to other areas. Again, that internet that is now going off to the Maintenance DAC and $62,000 in hardware and software that went to the Central Office DAC. In addition, IT has completed the installation of all the Wi-Fi systems across the district. While we were doing that, we did have contracted servicers come in and help us with all the wiring and hanging them all. Since that is complete, we've reduced it, we've reduced our contracted services in the IT Department, ultimately saving us about $18,000. I did mention the allocation of the $44,000 in the previous slide. In addition, I think I hit both of those, so I'll move on. Overall, just to bring it all back, our operating budget summary here by DAC, again, we have an overall reduction of just under 6.5 FTEs and an increase of just under $500,000, or 1.3% overall. Right here, I do have a summary of all our staffing changes across the district. Anyone can kind of go into detail and see where we are changing. Again, at the elementary level, we are seeing an uptick. Where at the secondary and the district-wide, we are seeing a reduction, again, an overall reduction of just about 2% of our overall staffing. Here, we have, again, a summary of all our budget changes that are greater or less than $10,000. You can see the biggest ticket items are our COLAs and our insurance rate increases and our step increases. Just like I said at the beginning, 72% of our budget relates to staffing, so the biggest increases we're gonna see also relate to staffing and our collective bargaining agreements. That wraps up the public hearing. I can take any questions from the audience. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Vinnie.
Longer than I wanted it.
Yeah, we are in the public hearing session, so if there's anyone in the public who has a question, please approach the mic. All right, seeing none. Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to take questions for anyone? I don't know.
I think we'll take questions during the, when we get to the agenda item, we'll take questions from the committee if there are any. All right, thank you so much for that presentation.
Of course.
Okay, do we have our Zoom link up?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so at this point, we will close the public hearing portion of our meeting, and we will call to order the regular meeting of the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee, and we'll remind you all, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed, and we'll begin by inviting you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next up, our opportunity for citizens' comments. Mr. Tracy, do we have anyone in the Zoom?
We do not.
We do not, so we have no citizens online who are here to make a comment, and it does not appear to me that we have anyone in the room who wants to make a comment. Okay.
Closing it down.
Seeing none, I will close citizens' comments at 7:24. Next up, I think, is it Jen? Would you read a portion of our School Committee protocols, please?
As elected members of the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee, we, including the superintendent, accept the high honor and trust that has been placed in us to ensure that the students of the district receive the best education possible. To that end, we hereby commit to the following in the conduct of our business. If an individual School Committee member receives an email relevant to overall district policy or operations, they will forward it to the full School Committee and the superintendent.
Thank you. Amy, would you please read a portion of our mission Amy, would you please read a portion of our mission statement?
Sure. The Hamilton-Wentham Regional School Committee will lead and inspire a district that supports and guides the superintendent to execute and achieve the approved 23-24 district goals.
Thank you. It was your opportunity to gesture.
Oh, did it ring?
Thank you. Next up, we have our student representative, Whitney Fitzgibbons, is here to give us her report.
She's going to get on the, she's going to get on the screen. Thank you for having me. I'm Whitney Fitzgibbons. I'm the junior class president at the high school, and I'm here today to talk about some of the events currently going on within the district. First, at the high school, it's a pretty busy time of the year. The Hearts and Flowers Concert is on February 13th. The one-act play performance is on March 1st. The DECA State Conference will be from March 7th to March 9th in Boston. Spring sports start on March 18th. The robotics team just had a big competition in Framingham on February 4th, and their robots finished 19th and 24th out of 48. DECA is currently selling candy grams for Valentine's Day, and the Class of 2025 is selling flowers also for Valentine's Day. The Class of 2024 is doing a district-wide clothing drive or spring cleaning drive from now until March 15th, and the Class of 2025 will be having a fundraiser on St. Patrick's Day where we will be selling St. Patrick's Day-themed festive pots of gold for younger families in the community. For clubs and sports, winter sports are starting to wrap up. Swimming and indoor track have been very strong this season. Girls and boys basketball are heading into the playoffs. The cheer team just had a competition at the LaSalle Academy Invitational where they placed third in. The boys and girls ski teams have also been doing very well. The girls are 10-1, and the boys are 3-7. The clubs at the high school are going very strong, especially DECA, along with Science Club, Robotics, Art Club, and way more. At the middle school, there is a winter badminton volleyball and pickleball intermurial, student council, choral, art club, and jazz band. Then, moving on to the elementary schools, it's pretty quiet. Winthrop School just celebrated the 100th day of school with a tropajama dress day along with an Accord food pantry donation. They have Rubik's Cube Club and Lego Builders Club throughout February and March, and a movie night on March 1st. At Cutler School, they just had their annual book fair from January 23rd to 25th, along with a Bash the Trash Assembly on February 2nd. And finally, at Bucareau School, there is currently an Accord food pantry drive going on from now until the 16th. There are a bunch of 5th grade after-school activities all throughout February and March, and they have a Valentine's Day concert on February 14th. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions I'm not sure that you'll know, but I'm just intrigued about what "bash the trash" means at Cutler.
I'm not really sure. I believe it's just about, like, learning how to recycle, throw away, compost, et cetera.
Makes sense, thank you. I also just, I wanted to just highlight, I noticed that there's a lot, you know, certainly Accord, a lot of different schools are doing things with Accord, and there are a lot of other charitable events going on. Makes me feel just good as a citizen to see that the students are focused on giving back to the community. It's really, thank you for highlighting those things. Anybody else have anything else? All right, thank you, Whitney.
Thank you.
All right, as always, you are welcome to stay, but we also understand that you probably have other responsibilities this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. I will say I have some things to hold. Does anyone have anything that they need to hold from the consent agenda?
I'm a bit confused. In the handouts that go with it, there are these invoices for National Grid and Iron Tree.
So it sounds like you want to hold the prior energy bills?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, we'll just hold that.
The Iron Tree, Aging Quicksome, that one.
Well, we'll hold the whole thing, the prior, we'll hold the whole prior energy bills. Is there something, anything else you wanted to hold on there?
Yeah, well, that, the National Grid is energy. I don't think the Iron Tree is energy unless I'm.
So, but they're all under, are you, I guess I'm just looking at the consent agenda. Are you trying to hold the prior energy bills, or are you trying to hold the warrants?
Well, I'm confused about whether, maybe Vinnie can clarify this, these many seemingly unpaid.
Can you plug in your mic? We can't, I can't hear you over here.
Sorry, I'm sorry, these many seemingly unpaid Iron Tree service bills.
So, just as, I'm.
Which agenda, which exhibit are we holding?
I'm just trying to work out, I'm trying to work out which part of the agenda they're on.
Okay, so it sounds like maybe we need to hold, because the two financial items there are the warrants and the prior energy bills. Is that what you're?
And the Iron Tree service bills, so we'll hold the.
But is that the, that's the warrants?
That's all under the.
It is under the warrants? Okay, fine, then I want to hold the warrants.
It is, it's actually in the prior energy bills exhibit.
Oh.
Is that what you're confused about? That's.
That's, that feels a little confusing.
Is that where it is, Vinnie?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll hold the prior.
Prior energy bills, okay. Does anyone else have any other items they want to hold? Okay, I do. I want to hold the minutes from February 1st and then the field trip extension. So, sorry, the consent agenda didn't really help us that much tonight, sorry. Julia, are you willing to do the honors?
I move that we accept the consent agenda with the exception of the energy bills, the minutes from February 1st, and the field trip extension.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Amy. All those in favor? And it is unanimous of the six members present? Okay, David, you held the prior energy bills, as, to be honest, I would have held them as well, so go ahead and ask your question.
Sure, and I suppose this question goes to Vinnie. What possible explanation is there for such high aging of these bills? They look like we, one is as old as 239 days, was two lots, but there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 that are 102 days to 239 days. That's really unusual unless you're really strapped for cash. Is there a particular reason why it's taken so long to pay them, based on their performance or lack of cash, or whatever it is? Sorry, just, it's a question.
I'll answer that one, because I asked the same question. Last week, Tom came to us with these bills, so I asked him to actually add the memo explaining what was going on. There were some abnormal, abnormalities with the energy bills, thus the improper title, because originally it was just energy bills, and then the next day, he brought us a couple more, like the paving bill that came from some sidewalk work that we did and the portable toilet rental, so not acceptable, not something that we, you know, do on a regular basis. I think you might remember, when we go back to, I think it was September, is generally when, that first meeting in September is generally where we clear anything that we missed during the prior year. So Tom's done his best here to outline exactly why, but it's still not anything that's acceptable and something we're having conversation with at the district level as well, so it's just, we still owe this money, that's part of the approval process, but not an acceptable practice. It's really, really late to be paying a lot of these bills.
Tough on local vendors.
Yep, yeah, no one should be waiting 200 days to get paid.
No.
You know, especially some of these smaller companies or local companies, so, yeah, this is definitely inappropriate, and in the conversations we're having, we don't expect it to happen again.
Terrific, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, Julia, can we have a memo on that? I mean, a motion on that.
Do we have to motion after each?
No, I think we can vote on the entire exhibit, as there's an exhibit.
Want to vote to pass the exhibit?
Well, I think the vote, it's, yeah.
Okay, I move, I move that we approve item D on the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Amy Kumberger. Is there any further discussion? I guess I just will add my voice that if David hadn't said something, I would have, it was concerning. I did appreciate the memo, I think that was helpful. I think it's helpful to acknowledge when we don't meet sort of our expectations, so I appreciate that. All right, are there any other questions, comments, discussion? All right, looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor? And that is unanimous of the six members present, and the motion passes. All right, I held the minutes on February, for the February 1st. I had actually a question for a committee member, which is you, Jen. The minutes, I went back and watched the recording, the minutes at the very beginning state that, it says, Dana Alara stated the school committee is being livestreamed, blah, blah, blah. She stated that member Jen Carr was attempting to participate remotely, but at this time the connection is not working. I went back and watched what I said to make, and it doesn't really say that, it says, "I don't see Jen yet," or something like that. I just wanted to clarify whether, I didn't think that was really what happened, that it wasn't that you couldn't connect, you were unable to attend.
It wasn't that I couldn't connect.
I just wanted to make sure, because I, my motion, I guess I move that that be corrected. I don't exactly know what I'm moving. I move to amend the minutes to state that member Jen Carr was anticipated to participate remotely but had not yet arrived, or something like that.
That's fine, just do that. Second?
Second by Julia Campbell. Is there a discussion? All right, all those in favor? And that is unanimous of the six members present, and the motion passes. I also held the field trip extension. I was hoping, Eric, you might just be able to provide a little more information about what happened here and.
Sure. If you've flown at all in the past six months, you've probably run into an airline issue. We have a group that, at the high school, is planning to go to Spain during April vacation. Unfortunately, the flights cannot be, cannot come out of Boston, which originally they anticipated they'd be able to fly out of Boston. The company has basically stepped up and covered the expense to bus our kids to New York to get a plane there to go on the trip. The dilemma is, they were supposed to be in school that Thursday, I believe it was Thursday, but they need to leave earlier in the day because of the four-hour bus ride to get to New York to get on the plane, so I just wanted the committee to be aware that that is happening. It'll happen on the other end, too. Company, World Strides, has taken the expense of the buses and all the food to feed kids when they get there, and so it's not coming out of anybody's pocket, it's just an irregularity with flights. They originally had flights scheduled out of Boston, those flights were not available when they got to this point in the year, and this is the result, so. No change in the trip, trips all still on and going forward, they just need to leave during the school day instead of after the school day.
I have a question. Go ahead.
I just want to, are the buses, like charter buses or Peter Pan buses? Are they?
They're the coach buses.
Okay.
Yeah, they paid for coach, so.
Not school buses.
Not school buses, no.
No, no, you wouldn't want.
They are coach buses.
And I just want to clarify that even though this is occurring on both ends, April 20th is not a school day, so they're not.
Correct.
It's one day that they are missing, that we didn't anticipate.
We expected they would be in school Thursday, the 11th, they're just going to have to leave that morning to get to New York, to get the flight, so.
That's a lot, a lot of traveling.
It is.
It's a pity, because I assume you can go from Logan straight to Kennedy, which is where the Spanish flight would come out of.
David?
Sorry, yeah, no, I'm surprised that they wouldn't do a short hop by plane from Logan to Kennedy, and that Kennedy is where it'd go, that is a long bus ride.
I think the last-minute change in the size of the group going presented a difficulty. So, I think it was anticipated a while, you know, months earlier, they probably would have been able to pull that off. I think it's just because of the size of the group going and the last, kind of the last minute. By the way.
Also, having, having had this exact thing happen to me, if you have to buy those tickets separately and they're not linked to your other ticket, if that flight is delayed and you miss your flight to Spain, you're not compensated for it. I learned that one the hard way.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move that we accept item C on the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Jen Carr. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? And that is unanimous of the six members present. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Could I make a request?
Yep.
I have to go to a family activity, and I really would like to review the students' start time survey. Can we table that till the next meeting?
Um.
Or are we going to vote on it? Like, is this something I can just email you about?
I think we're providing feedback, so, right?
If you have three minutes, I can tell you what I was going to ask.
Okay.
That's all. Do you want to do that first?
Without objection, can we move forward to this?
Yeah, can we move it then?
Go ahead.
Is everybody okay with it?
Yep, yes.
So all, I put this on here at the request of Jen, last meeting, we were going forward this. This is kind of the first iteration of the survey. I wanted to put it in front of everybody on the committee, in case you wanted to add anything or reword something, or you thought something should be changed or adjusted, just let me know, and then we'll plan to send it out after vacation. That's the only reason it's on the, there's no vote.
When would we need to get your feedback?
Probably before vacation.
Okay.
That would be good, by the 15th.
I hear that.
That would be great.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
All right, so there we go. All right, and I have feedback, I'll give it to an email form instead of here.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. All right, given that, all right, now, if we back up, the next item of business, if I'm looking correctly, is item 9A, adopted FY '25 budget, which we have a very specific motion.
Yeah, I don't have it. Can you move my program? Do you have it?
He can put it up on the screen for you, Julia.
Do you think I can see that?
Yeah.
I can't.
I can try. Oh, here, it's all, it's all caps. Okay, I'm going to say this now.
Yep.
Okay, we'll see. Okay, I can probably see that, we'll see. I move that the Hamilton-Wentham Regional School Committee approve the final FY '25 general fund expenditures budget of $43,790,174. This includes general fund operating expenses after offsets in the amount of $41,723,480 and general fund debt service expenses in the amount of $2,66,694. My gosh. Furthermore, the gross operating expenses of the district before offsets have been allocated by the DESI-defined chart of accounts according to the summary by DESI category chart included in this budget presentation as detailed in the exhibit.
Can, can I make one change before I second?
You have a friendly amendment?
Yes, a friendly amendment. We said 2025 instead of 20.
I immediately changed it before I put it up, that's why I ran, that's why I ran up here.
I think I read 25, I read 25.
I said the right thing.
She said the right, that's why I ran up here, put it on here.
Yeah, I was reading off of the.
Yeah, I did the same thing.
Okay, so I, I'm understanding that you're choosing not to offer a friendly amendment, and I'm still, and I'm still waiting for a second.
Second.
Okay, second by Amy Kumberger. Okay, I think we got that.
Okay. I'm glad I didn't, I know.
Are there any questions before we move to debate and discussion? Are there any questions? Clarifying questions? Anybody want, we need to repeat everything that he said earlier.
Repeat all the slides.
We beg him not to.
Is there any discussion?
No, it's been done.
Okay, looks like we're ready to vote. Okay, this motion requires.
Majority of the whole.
A, just a majority?
Of the whole, so.
Yeah, of the whole, correct. Right, that was my point, right, exactly. Requires a majority of the whole, not just a majority of those present. All right, all those in favor? And that is unanimous of the six members present, and the motion passes. And that is unanimous of the six members present and the motion passes.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you have to sign anything this time, Vinnie? I always forget.
Wow.
You don't need that now.
I was gonna say, that was a good time for it to go.
But it's over. It can, it can fall.
We just did it.
Oh, thanks, Dave.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I read that motion with all the numbers on it, so you can thank me for that.
Were you waiting outside the door? It was like, this moment.
Yeah, so you didn't have to read the 43 million.
Thank you very much for all of the hard work that everyone put into that budget, but especially thank you, Vinnie, for all of that.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Jen.
That's okay. No, kids come first.
So are we, do we feel like, I know that Jen, I know we have a departing, a person that's leaving, but we briefly touched on the school start time survey. You don't, we don't want to have discussion at all. We're just.
No, just asking for feedback.
So, yeah, so please provide written feedback in the form of an email to Eric on the school start time survey review. That's all we need.
Yes.
Thanks, Jen.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, school and district report cards.
So this, this week, the school and district report cards came out. DESI had cleared them for release. Were required to put them out by the 15th of February to our families and our community. The district report card went out yesterday, so that, actually, they all, they all went out in the same email, but the district report card was kind of the lead and then each of the principals will send by the end of this week, so by tomorrow. Many of them are already out, their own building-level report card with their own letter. And then certainly there's opportunity for parents to chime in if they need to, especially if it's a Title I school. Just so everybody knows, the one school in the district that is a Title I school that receives entitlement funding from the state is the Bucker School. So it's kind of a special condition where parents and caregivers can really ask for some pretty in-depth information, including whether your child's teacher is licensed in the grade level and subject that they teach, whether your child's teacher is teaching under emergency license or waiver. You can ask about the college degree and major of your child's teacher and whether or not your child provided services by paraprofessionals and if so, their qualifications. Just so people are aware, paraprofessionals in our district are called ESPs now. This is just a kind of a form letter from the state. But the report cards are out. We encourage everybody to take a look at the report cards, both the district and each building. And, you know, if they, if they need more clarification, we're asking people to reach out to their building principals to get building-level clarification and certainly I am always available to review the report cards. If I can get this to pop up here. And it really just breaks down a number of things like, you know, who are our students' teachers, or how many kids are in the district, but then gets into deeper things like attendance. What does attendance and discipline look like in our district? We average a 95% attendance rate, which is excellent. Then when you start to look at days absent, our days absence is actually improving. We're down to 8.8 from 10.1 on average across the district. Student discipline is really low to, it doesn't even show on the chart. It's so low for our district. And then it goes into success of high school outcomes, how prepared basically our kids for success after high school. And then it looks at things like graduation rates for kids who graduate in four years or five years. And in our district, they, they have, it's an interesting thing. They give 20 and 21 the data for four-year and five-year and then 22, they don't give the, the five-year average because the school, the year just ended for those kids. It would have been 2023. So they, the DESI is always a year or two behind, so that's why it doesn't show. That was the first question I got when this was sent out. But generally, 97% of our kids graduate in a four or a five-year in 2021. That was down a little bit in 22 to 95%, and it'll be interesting to see what the percentage is on the five-year in 2022. Dropout rate is up, and this is a, this is a product of a small school district. This represents a couple of kids. This does not represent a gigantic pool of kids. So when you go from usually having one or 1.5 kids drop out, it depends on where they are in the year, you know, we're up to 1.8, which is actually one student dropped out and never returned. Other kids that left, the majority of those kids come back generally. Some kids leave the district and we can't track them because the state can only track within the state. But this to me is, this 22 number is an anomaly and we know it'll be down next, for next reporting. And then it looks at things like graduation rates and enrollments and what they call college-going rates. Just some interesting data. Spending per student, and that, that looks at it from a perspective of state and federal funds. It breaks out. You can see how, how much, a huge amount of money we get from federal funds for our, for our schools. But again, the majority of the dollars spent come from, from state and local funds, mostly local funds. We get, as you know, we get about $6 million in state funding between Chapter 70 and transportation and circuit breaker. And then accountability data, which is where everybody's interested. We are making substantial progress towards targets in our district. So no intervention or assistance, but we continue to grow and learn and work within the district on, on the variables within the district, like the work that we're doing next week with the principals. They're all reporting their formative evaluation data. And for them, it's looking at the data and showing how the data is shifting in their buildings from the beginning of the year till now. So, you know, we continuously look at that and, you know, work with that with our principals, but also with our data teams all the way down to the, to the grade level. So today I was in a data meeting for kindergarten over at the Cutler, and it was really, really cool to see, you know, what they're looking at with kids and how they're bringing kids along. And kids are making really good progress, especially in kindergarten, as they go through the system. So the report cards are a little bit limited in scope, but it's just kind of a big chunk of information for people to see. And I always tell people to go to the, our website for more information, reach out to the principals of your child's school for questions or issues. And if you can't get answers there, please, please reach out to me or at my office and we will find the information that people are looking for.
Okay, Trent, can you talk right into the mic?
I can do that. What, over the past, say, three years, are areas that you've seen improvements in the report card metrics? And what are areas that you look at and say there's still room for improvement moving forward?
Yeah, we, so the report, interestingly enough, the report cards don't align with the work that we're doing in our, at the school level because the school level is not 100% focused on MCAS. MCAS is that snapshot in time. And the work we're doing at the school level is across the entire year. So we go back to our literacy data. We're seeing really good gains now that we've established our literacy curriculum. And we're focusing on math this year, so we're starting to see that kind of turn now as well. We're looking at it as subgroups, so our subgroups have really shifted to two subgroups for us. Looking at special ed, we're seeing improvements, but need continued improvements there. Low-income students, seeing some improvements, but need to really focus there. And that's part of a second, so a second piece of this is our SOA, Student Opportunity Act Plan, which you will see in the second meeting in March that gets submitted to the state. And that brings all this to kind of like to the subgroup level. This is kind of the wider range. And that subgroup level work that we're doing is part of our intervention system, our MTSS, and our measurement and accountability that we're doing across all the way from grades one through grades 10 now, using DIBELS and Star Renaissance and some of the other assessments along, along the child's journey through the, through the district. So we're seeing literacy improvements that are really big from, go back three years when I started this thing, when I highlighted the issue with literacy was that third-grade Cutler, third-grade Bucker, and third-grade in Winthrop were probably not the same experience. That has shifted dramatically. Our teachers have done unbelievable work. Our, our support personnel has done unbelievable work to take on that new curriculum, CKLA, and to work to build the MTSS system up. And, you know, again, that's, that's a five-to-seven-year process. We're in year two, really, when you, when you think about where we kicked in the literacy curriculum last year. We'll do the same thing with math. We're, we're doing a multiple curriculum review process for math to determine at the elementary and middle and high school what best, best math programs for our kids to use. So we're in that process now with the state and that will again help us to drive improvements along the way. We're mostly focused on subgroups. We really, that's, that's a push from the state as well because they link the subgroups and the, the push on subgroups to accountability monies, which is built into the SOA funding. Right now, we haven't, we haven't seen the final budget, but the governor's budget came out with a paltry $30 per student in, in kind of monies to put towards improvements, which for us is about 48 grand. Last year, we got $60 per student, which was, you know, a little, a little bit more money, but still, you know, these, these curricula cost $150,000 to $200,000 apiece to just, to just up, get, get up and running. So it's, we're moving forward. We're making progress. We put monies aside from ASSER to, to use for specifically for these curriculum purchases, so we have those things covered. But we're just constantly reporting out and, and later on in the school year, you'll see the literacy presentation and see some of the gains that we've made over the years. But just looking at the kindergarten grade today, when you start to look at how many, how many five-year-olds can, you know, identify and recognize all the letters, all 26 letters, and this time of the year, two years ago, it wasn't 24 or 25 out of the 26 letters. It was 18, 17, 16. So I think, you know, those, those are pieces of the puzzle along the way. There's just lots of data discussion going on to drive that shift and that change. And I think you'll, I think you'll see a shift in, you know, the Cutler School last year, their accountability scores were low, which is reflected in this report card, but I think you'll see that shift because there's been a pretty, pretty heavy focus on the intervention specific for those, those kids that are in need and mostly related to subgroups, but also kids who may not be in, in particular, subgroups.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have a quick question. So this data is mostly based on MCAS scores and attendance and kids going to college. It doesn't take into account all of the, I mean, it can't because they do this for every school in the state. So it's just that sort of bird's eye view. It's not.
There is a, you can, there are a lot of tabs for subgroup information.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but on those measures, but you can pull out by various subgroups.
The report card, the report card, like I'll use Bucker School, so let's use, pull them on state tests. There are links at the bottom of each section.
Okay.
That you can click on to get more in-depth data. So you can click on that and it takes you to the state district profile. So then you can really get into, this is a rabbit hole. If you're gonna do this, do it on a Saturday morning or something, or Sunday morning, because it gives you all of our information by, you know, comparison for MCAS, item-by-item results. So you can start to look at what kids are, where kids are doing well in standards and where kids need, need some, some help and some support. Participation rates, growth reports, you know, so it goes from this to that. So the report card is, it's like I always tell people, it's really not a lot of information. It's, it's the broad overview. But in the report card, you have those opportunities to click on more advanced data and more detailed data. And it's, it's pretty fascinating. You can really spend far too much time examining data and really looking at, you can go through everything. You can look at student data. You can look at teacher, teacher data in the district by school, by the district. You can, you can do trends, which I just popped up there, and when you click the trends, they give us schools that we compare to and then we start comparing our data to theirs. So it's fascinating data. Enrollment shifts. You can add other schools into this and do comparisons, so lots of fun if you're a data person. Right, Vinnie?
Thank you. All right. Other questions?
Just one quick question. The, this is, I got an isolated report that there was a sort of blip in student absences and teacher absences just this last week. I was wondering whether you were seeing that in the overall numbers.
Across the district?
Well, at least across the high school and the middle school. I don't know about the rest.
Yeah, I mean, it shifts around. And in the winter, it shifts around from building to building. I mean, you, you see flu, RSV, COVID, all of those basically come through the schools during December, January. You know, so it, it depends. One school has 100% attendance, like the other day I was at Winthrop and it was 100% attendance for teaching staff, which, you know, which, when you go to another school, it's probably 94%. You know, you got four or five people out, so, yeah, it shifts, shifts around.
Yeah, no, I was just curious because the national figures are going up like crazy.
Yeah. Ours are not reflective of the national. We're not, we're not seeing that level of absenteeism, but it's pretty, it's pretty similar to what we've seen in the past. December and January numbers do fluctuate pretty quickly. And then they taper, they taper out usually right in March, where they have in the past taper in March, April, as we get into spring.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Oh, and I would say, are you talking about chronic absenteeism, David?
No, you know, because it cycles, as Eric says, based on the season. And I was just curious as to whether it's exceptional. The wastewater, the, where there is wastewater measurement, it would appear that there's a lot more than is being actually diagnosed.
Okay. I thought you were talking about chronic absenteeism. I just heard a report on NPR about it. And I would say our numbers for like chronic absenteeism are way below national. But sorry, that wasn't what you were talking about. That's, that's like 15, 12, 15 days absence?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen days. Okay, okay. So that wasn't what you were talking about, but I thought that might be. Because I'd heard, I'd heard about that too, and I know it's a national problem, but I, I don't see us experiencing that.
Actually, Massachusetts is, is quote recovering, but still there's lots of work to do, mostly in, in places like the gateway cities. The larger cities and larger school systems, we, our attendance has been pretty good. I mean, we're, we're, even last year, we were trending down. Two weeks ago, the commissioner tried to bring the chronic attendance issue to make a hammer out of it, to really force school systems to make shifts, and the Board of Education, State Board of Education voted no. Leave the accountability measures the same and let them continue to do the work they're doing. And I think, you know, one of the things you can do, you can see at our schools is principals are reaching out, nurses call every day when kids are out. They're sending letters home. They're meeting with families. So our people on the ground are, are doing the work to, to help to lower that. So I think you'll see improve, you'll just see continued improvement over time.
At the same time, collecting root cause? I know that previously you've said that they're somehow not able to say this was because they went on a family holiday or they had this illness or that illness.
Yeah, the state doesn't differentiate between an absence. So if your child, you decide, I'm taking my kid out the week before February vacation because his flights are cheaper, that still counts as an absence towards the chronic absenteeism, and we still have that issue. We're, we run into that issue fairly consistently in this district where people travel during the school year. We, we try to reach out and say, please don't do that. There's only 180 days of school. We want kids to have the most time in school as possible so we can give them everything they come for. But, you know, we're still wrestling with that a little bit.
Can you tally it as you go? I mean, or is that too awkward a question to be asking?
We can tally it, but the state, when they pull our data, they just isolate it as an absence.
Yeah, and parents don't have to say. I can say, Colin's out today. Sorry. I don't have to say why.
Even if it's an excused absence, the state doesn't differentiate. They just say an absence is an absence. So it's, it's tough because we, we, we have a system where Johnny had to go to the doctors or broke his leg and is out of school. We know why this child's out of school or there's a mental health issue, but the state doesn't differentiate and that's really the, the conversation that we need to have with the state.
Yeah, the public health people should.
Yeah, yeah.
Be asking for, for a bit of granularity of the data in order to better understand what to do about it.
Okay. Other questions?
This was just information. I just wanted everybody to know. They went out. I assume most people will receive them because they have kids in school, but just in case.
No, I, I definitely went down a rabbit hole and.
It's easy to do.
Yeah, and, and not sure I retained much of it. It was just very interesting to look at. Okay, next up, let's see where we are. Committee reports. Capital Finance, Jen is not with us.
We met. I don't remember last week, two weeks ago. It was two weeks ago. Okay, so we probably don't have anything to update since we reported out last week. Okay, nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Excellent. Good work. Thank you. Policy?
Well, we had a very spirited meeting. That's a fair description.
I'm sorry, you had a what?
A very spirited meeting.
Spirited meeting, okay.
And came to a resolution that we would, at a future date, maybe in a month or so, put on the agenda to, um, a motion. And uh came to um a resolution that we would, at a future date, maybe in a month or so, uh put on the agenda to um a motion. Recommend a motion with with the ground to indoor equality.
Okay, we will look forward to that at a future meeting.
And and I I did feel it was actually more more than spirited, it was actually quite valuable, the previewing of what, how complex it is to really get across all the the related issues. So I I think it was valuable to have the the pre-discussion in the subcommittee, I really felt, so.
All right, thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, uh, negotiations.
Excuse me, uh, we had a strategy meeting on Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
And uh we actually have another meeting coming up on Monday with the um, excuse me, union representatives. Hopefully, we're getting close to a resolution at this point.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay, um, secretary report, um, David did send out a spreadsheet, thank you for that.
Yeah, um, so it looks like I sent a follow-up email with you.
Yeah.
Did you get that? All right, um, so assuming the school committees caught up after today, I'm assuming we voted those two in.
Can I?
Negotiations, we have a couple that need to get voted in and we'll do that on Tuesday, I mean, I'm sorry, on Monday. Capital Finance has a.
Slough.
Probably about sixteen or eighteen here, um, that looked like, I had one question, the nine thirteen twenty twenty-three, I didn't see that in the approved.
I don't, I don't know, I'll check.
If you look at that spreadsheet, it's the only one that's yellow. But I I gave um Julia, looking through the notes, it, a couple of them said that they were voted prior minutes, but didn't name the minutes, so I just suggested actually doing a uh, um, like a consent agenda and just voting them all in at once, um, having her share the notes she has and then they'll be all caught up. And then policy seems to have four outstanding and it, but I don't know where they stand.
I submitted the latest minutes and then I had to amend the August ones. And then we weren't sure if we'd voted on the September ones, so we need to do a consent agenda probably.
I don't even see August and September around here.
You haven't seen them, okay, I'll send them to you.
What's that?
I'll send them to you.
So, okay.
For this year or for?
I I'm sorry, I'm just looking at sort of what I have um that I had pulled out from the info you sent me.
Okay.
So, yeah.
That's, that's very helpful.
I think we have a pretty decent handle on getting this.
Yeah, it's, 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 it sounds, it sounds like we have a plan. I did want to add um one that was missing, which is that the full committee is actually missing a minutes from the quintuple board in November. And I already sent Janelle um an email and she's gonna check with Bev and figure out um how that. I'm not sure how that happened, but.
I, I'll tell you offline.
Do I need to submit those?
Nope.
Okay.
No, no, the quintuple.
My god, give me some more minutes.
But it, there's a, I looked, there's a recording of it, so the minutes can be recor-
It's in process.
It can be created.
Yep, it's in process, we reached out to Bev today.
Okay, yeah, so that is, so the the full committee has that to do, to take care of. And it sounds like Julia has her hands full figuring out capital finance and policy.
Well, it sounds like, I mean, honestly, the majority of those can just be voted in a consent agenda and then there's maybe four or five outstanding still, but I've written them, but I'll just get them to Dave.
Okay.
Yeah, we're actually, there there's, it looks like a lot, but it actually, I think we're pretty.
Okay.
We're getting squared away.
It'll be more cleaning up.
Good.
Those.
And that'll be good, we'll look forward to March, having a secretary's report with a lot, uh, I mean, there's always gonna be something, just because there's always a catch-up, but.
Yeah, we'll see how good I am at keeping up with this spreadsheet.
We'll look at, we'll, we'll look to.
It is pretty.
Right, to not, not the next meeting, but the second meeting in March, we'll, we'll look for the next secretary report. Thank you for that, I appreciate it. Eric, to you for superintendent's report.
Great, thank you, a couple, a couple of repeats, because I think they're important to repeat. I know uh Whitney had hit a couple of these, but I want to congratulate our cheerleaders, who took a third place at LaSalle Academy. That's a, that's a big uh, big win for them, so that's exciting. Tomorrow night, the night, uh, the DECA Bingo Night at the high school. It's from six to seven, ten dollars to get in, uh, they they do more than bingo. So you, you know, it's it's a little dance, a little excitement, a lot of music, um, and some bingo. Doors will open at five forty-five. And then next week, uh, our annual hearts and flowers cabaret, it is, just want people to know, is in a different location. It has been in the past in Danvers, it is at the Black Swan in Georgetown. It starts at seven P M, it's a great event, if you've never been, it's it's very unique uh event with with our uh singers and musicians. And that starts at seven, that's on the thirteenth, Tuesday, tickets are thirty-five dollars. Covers uh access to get in, hors d'oeuvres and beverages, uh cake and coffee. And uh that is it. And just people, I just wanted to remind people to look out for their their building level report cards.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the superintendent? All right, thank you very much. I don't have really much to say on the chair's report. Um, I did want to just report out, I did go to, they asked if I would come to the Wenham Select Board. They were taking a vote to um enter into conversations about the regional agreement. And I went and they didn't really need me, which was perfect, um, which was great. And uh they did, in fact, vote to um begin negotiations, so I believe that we have all three. Hamilton has voted and Wenham has voted and we have voted a long time ago. And uh so I think we're gonna get started. I, after tonight's meeting, I wanted to just bring that to you and if anyone had any questions or comments. But my intent is to contact Mark Terry, our legal counsel, and the hope will be that the, um, and I know that this is the hope of all three boards, that that it will be the three lawyers doing the bulk of the um, at least initial work. So, any questions, comments?
My, my question really, yeah, is what's the process, so just the lawyers first?
So I think that we don't, I don't know exactly. And at some point, Desi will need to get involved in the process, um, but I think at the beginning, the lawyers are gonna, and they have done some work already, um, of sort of redlining the document, things that, the initial redlining was things really just things that are no longer uh compatible with mass general law, because the document is so old. So redlining those kinds of things, um, as well as straightforward things, but just really antiquated language. Everyone's a chairman or a, you know, like things like that, and those just, you know, the men of the committee will do this. And, you know, like it just, it's just antiquated language, so they they just did those kinds of quick.
It still says that.
I I think it's the select.
Selectmen.
Men, I guess, but I, it doesn't matter, a- anyway, those kinds of things are already been sort of done. But then they'll be rewriting on how to fix it and those kinds of things. But yeah, at some point, Desi will need to get involved. I don't know if you recall, a long time ago, in a meeting, we put the Desi checklist up there and we talked about, Desi has a very prescribed checklist on how to create a regional agreement. So our agreement will have to fit into that just Desi.
Okay.
Do we have a senator or is this a negotiation really between the two towns?
Oh, no, it, no, 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 it's the three of us, the negotiating, yes.
So, do we have specific substantive kind of changes we want?
So, um.
Other than complying with regulations?
The main things that when we presented it, overall, the main things that we are looking at is the, and if you look at the regional agreement, the beginning sections are all about the elections and much of those um portions are no longer compliant with mass general law. The way that the elec-, and it's also no longer the way that we actually get elected. The assumption when it was written was that the school committee itself is running an election. Which is not something that's legal or done, right? So that's a big part of it, is that, is to work through that. We've also expressed, and we did again, um, expressed to both other boards a desire, and I have at the um five chairs meeting too, a desire to look at the apportionment, um, which is now a three-year average and a desire from our end to expand that out to a longer period of time, so that we wouldn't have the extreme ups and downs. I don't know, David, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I think at at some point, you know, um, that's sort of where we're coming from on the offensive. I think when this gets, I I think there's, there, you should look at this at like, is like, you know, two to three stages. It's gonna be this first, this first stage, it's like a lot of this, the cleanup of the language, uh, that's gonna be, you know, not much at all. And then there's gonna be a little bit back and forth between the towns on on that apportionment, right? And this sort of that um, that power, it it may be the setup of of this board a little bit could change too.
Potentially.
Instead of having every, you know, um, I think at that point, our role is really gonna be a little bit more, I I don't want to say like defensive, like it, but like I I think it's just a better way of looking at it, just to make sure that we're then looking at it like from the district standpoint, making sure that like each town, you know, isn't sort of just looking at it through a tunnel vision and we're looking at it a little bit more holistically from the students and schools perspective and just making sure that, you know, um, we're there. I I don't think, I mean, feel free to sort of read through it and see if there's anything that, you know, you see that we could be um doing, because this is obviously the opportunity to, you know, take advantage of 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 the situation. But I think of the most part, um, you know, the towns have some stuff that they, you know, it was written sixty years or so ago.
Right, it was originally written, I believe, in nineteen fifty-nine.
Yeah, you know, so, so there's a, a lot of updating that needs to happen just on, just the way, you know, e- each town is run and the state is run as well, but, you know, we just want to make sure that, um, you know, in in the process of them trying to organize their business, that, you know, the the overall sort of health and well-being of the district, that that's really our charge in all of this. So um whether or not the negotiation sort of takes the lead there and then brings it to the, it, we will make sure that you guys are well informed throughout the whole thing, you know, as information comes to us, um, you know, so we can work collectively to to make sure that we're taking care of our end, you know, the district laws.
And I I will say, I did um, I did say at the Wenham Select Board or and at the chairs meeting that one of the things to remember is that we're just opening up discussions and that the the agreement is in place and unchanged, unless and until we all three sign a new agreement. So, you know, we're opening up a discussion, we're not throwing out the agreement, it's still in place, we're.
I I I think we're in a really good place, I've, in the, in the, you know, my my ninth year at this point, right? In the, of the nine years, I'm probably the most comfortable with these two boards as they sit, the the being the two different town um boards, that I don't feel like there's any sort of gotcha, whereas in past boards, I would have definitely been been nervous about um, about really opening this up. But I I do think that i- it's it's something that it really does need to happen, um, in in that this is probably the the best opportunity to do that. I am still a little nervous, but I think.
Yeah, and I don't anticipate it being, and we don't know, but I don't anticipate it being a fast process, I think it'll be slowly. Um, and to David's, you know, David mentioned that it is an interesting, I know I, mine is written all over, I really took, it's not that long. And I, you know, have read the whole thing several times with pen in hand and there are just big question marks and circles around things like, does this happen, what is this, what does this mean, you know, um, so it's an interesting read. And sometimes it serves us well, um, you know, we just, I said, we just got Trent, because I was able to look up in the regional agreement and it told me exactly how to get a new member, so it's useful for something.
We no longer go with goats.
Yeah. Okay, um, I don't think I have anything else unless anyone has any other questions for me. Okay, uh, do we have any topics for future meetings? I do understand that the policy committee will be bringing forward a topic. Anyone else?
Um, eventually we'll have a visual communications update.
Okay.
We will keep you informed of which meeting.
Okay, all right, great.
In March, yeah.
Right, so that, yeah, that was gonna be March-ish?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
Sorry, I missed, I missed, didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Oh, an update on the visual communications project.
Yeah, we'll put that in March, that sounds great.
Is is there any planned date for the offsite, kind of strategy session that we had last year?
For the?
For the committee.
The retreat?
Retreat?
The retreat?
Yeah, uh.
Do you mean the retreat, like in the, in the summer?
Retreat, sorry, that was the word, yes.
Um, no, but you know, is that, are you, that could be a topic for a future meeting, is to get that date on the calendar, is that?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, that, we can, yep. Yeah, I think that's, if we want to do a retreat, the sooner the better to get it on the calendar. Okay. Anyone have anything else?
Yes, I motioned to.
Oh, wait, hold on.
I move, I move.
Oh, do you have something?
Just the financial.
Oh, yeah, I move.
Yes, I have that, yes, okay.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Second by Julia, all those in favor? And that is unanimous of the six members present.
Yeah, anyone could, anyone can motion that.
Thank you for the twenty-one, that was very kind.